Be a full out report. Uh, the other thing that is in here that I wanted to point out in this introductory section is, um, a statement in here that says that this plan is a plan. It is required to be updated every seven years or so, and that doesn't mean you can't change it anywhere along the way. Uh, if something's not working, you go in and you do a, uh, plan modification. And so, a lot of folks think, oh, you know, this is setting policy for the next 10 years that we're going to be changing. No, not true. Um, in terms of dealing with this, it can be changed. There's a lot of other folks that ask us, well, what's wrong with the current plan? And why are you changing? And, um, for those of you with their plan with you, if you go to page seven, uh, I mean, can you do that? That way it's a little bit clearer. Um, it talks about in the middle there, there's a set of bullets as to some of the concerns we had with the current plan. Uh, one, a clear lack of fair understanding and direction. Two, an increased number of regulatory policies typically reserved for the land development code. Three, studies and some plans and master plans that were not undertaken, weren't funded, weren't completed. Uh, four, uh, we wanted to show more realistic build out than what was in the current plan. And five, we wanted to, uh, deal with, uh, changes that have happened in Florida growth management laws, uh, since the old plan was implemented. Uh, so. So, those five bullets that you see there, can you, uh, fill that up a little? Thank you. Okay. Now, to drive that point home a little bit, the consultant went through the current plan. Current plan has 721 goals, objectives, and policies. And out of those, 647 of them had one or more, or excuse me, there were 647 items identified in the 720 that needed to be worked on, based on those categories that you have up there. And there's a table, uh, on page nine that lists all of them. That doesn't mean that 647 were bad out of 720. It just means that there were 647 problems identified, uh, out of the 720 that were there. And we have them by the design characteristics of that were involved. That's the highlights I wanted to do out of the introductory section. Is there any questions by council members at this point? Hearing none, I'm going to move on.
Move on.
Thank you, sir. Okay. The next section of the comprehensive plan is the background section. And we have labeled this, what influences the plan? These are the things, the, uh, factors that come into play to decide, uh, what are the things that are going to impact your plan going forward? What impacts the city? We started with the history, which has an impact. John Nolan planned from 1927 and everything that's occurred since then. Uh, to include that we have an airport now that we didn't have in 1927. We have an intercoastal waterway. Interstate 75 was built. Uh, things were allowed along the beach and, uh, a lot of other things were developed over time that changed the nature of the city of Venice. We also point out the geography of the city of Venice has an influence on it. We're on a beach, it has impact. Uh, we're a destination that people want to come in the wintertime. We're in the south, we're in Florida. Um, the city itself comprises today, so 9,484 acres, or about 15 square miles, uh, that's out there. Um, we had our consultant do a market assessment, uh, which included a lot of different things, the biggest part of which were several pages on the demographics, uh, about the city, uh, both today and where it's going up through 2013. Um, the population statistics are quite interesting. And one of the things that jumps off the table at us is that while every age group, and I mean that, uh, ages zero to 14, 15 to 24, 25 to 34, I don't know if you can go to this one again, yeah, there you go. Every age group shows an increase but one, and that's the age 35 to 44. We are losing people in that age group. But we thought it was important to highlight that because it goes to make some decisions about what we're going to talk about in this plan. But the previous, uh, one before shows the growth, Japanese, thank you, shows, uh, the statistics today. The silver part that's on there is the seasonal population. Uh, before 2010, I guess they didn't capture it, and we have it going from there. Uh, so you see a projected population of 27,000, 020. Now, I should point out that that is one source. We have had population projections that go from low twenties to mid thirties, depending on the source that you look at. So, it's not an absolute, but the state wants you to take the population into consideration to know that what you're going to do in your comprehensive plan will address your expected population going forward. Uh, we have some other demographic material that's in here. I think the one that was interesting to us is a little diagram. Jeff, if you can go to that one, please. This talks about people working in the city. Um, so those that work in the city, about a thousand of them live in the city. About 11,000 commute in to work in the city, and about 3,500 commute out to work somewhere else. So, it's an interesting dynamic as to what is going on out there in terms of our employment and where people live that actually work in the city. Um, one of the things that have generated some interest, uh, has been how many, how many potential dwelling units could you have within the city based upon the plan? Now, I started with, well, how many are out there today? Today, there are about 18,845 dwelling units in the city of Venice. Roughly today, based upon the market analysis that we've done, we have 1.75 people per household out there in the city of Venice. If you do that in math real quick, and Jeff Boone talks about Venice High School math, mine comes from Maryland, so you'll bear with me. I could say it came from West Virginia, but we'll get too many comments on that. So, uh, but that gives you, yeah, I know, you and I are okay with that. That gives you a projected population of almost 33,000 based upon the dwellings that are out there. So, it's an interesting figure, uh, with that standpoint, but we thought it was important to compare the old plan versus the proposed plan. And so, Jeff, if you can pull up this table, um, it's a little bit difficult to deal with because the, the current plan does things differently from the proposed plan. Let me walk the city council member through this because this is one of those policy decisions that is in front of you. You will notice that we have done the residential, low, moderate, eating, and high. The old plan did not have a moderate category. That's why you see a zero. We are identifying that there is, uh, a moderate category, which is five dwelling units to nine dwelling units an acre. That's what's in that moderate. So, low is zero to five, five to nine, nine to 13, and then 13 to 85. Okay? So, that's what those four residential, uh, areas there. Now, interesting enough, in the current plan, uh, even though it is a non-residential classification called commercial and institutional professional, you're allowed to do residential units in there. They lay out the percentages and conversion factors and what have you in that plan. We didn't think that was all very predictable about what was going on. So, one of the major policy decisions is that we do not have any residential in commercial or institutional professional. So, if it's future land use, let me make this statement right up front, I'm going to have to make it several times today, future land use is not zoning. Future land use is future land use. Zoning is zoning. We will talk about where they intersect. Um, but one of the policy decisions that we made, uh, was to be more predictable in the plan. So, when it says and it's highlighted as commercial with the color that we have on the map, that's all you're going to see in there. Today, if you looked at the map and it had a color for commercial, you might have residential in it. We don't think that's very clear for people to understand, for these good people. So, when you go down through there, you see that there are about 859 potential dwelling units in the current plan in those two other future land use categories. Now, they also had 12 planting areas in there, and based upon the maximums that were allowed in those, uh, planning areas, uh, there was another 24,000 there, and their total comes up to about 50,000. In the plan that we're proposing, we trade off planting areas for mixed-use areas. And you can see that there's 23,942, a little difference in between. Uh, but our total comes out to 38,981. Now, that number on both sides has gone through a lot of revisions based on comments and questions that we have had. The only other thing I'd like to point out is that the proposed plan includes 800 or so more acres than what the current plan has in it. We have annexed a number of properties into the city, so the current, the proposed plan includes that additional acre, uh, that's in there. It's about 800 or so acres. Everybody with me on this so far? Any questions based upon this policy decision that's out there?
Over this way, Rich.
Yeah.
You're recognized.
Barry, thank you. I have a question on this particular chart. On page eight, when you went through, uh, the background, you had mentioned the current dwelling units are 18,345.
Right.
Okay. So, uh, by looking at this chart and seeing 38,981, are we to assume that the plan permits approximately 21,000 more dwelling units?
The plan would permit that. It doesn't say that they would actually occur.
Right.
And if you multiply that number by 1.75, which is your next thing, you're going to see a population that is 80,000 projected. The other one had a population of about 85,000, 80,000. What the state wants us to do, Mr. Schrum will correct me if I ever get out of line here, is to make sure that you have enough capacity to handle what your projected population is. What we should all take away from this is, we've got plenty of capacity, no matter which plan you give them. What we tried to do is make more realistic estimates about what that capacity could be. Does that answer your question?
I, I guess what I'm hearing is that this, the population or the dwelling units of the city is kind of more than double.
Could, I mean, they're going to, could. And, and, and let me make that clear about, about some things. Just because something has a future land use potential of, let's say, five units per acre, it doesn't mean that you're going to put five units per acre on there. And let me give an example, which I went through this morning in my own head because I needed to know this. Um, we have a lot of places marked low density residential, zero to five units per acre. Now, this is the difference between land use and zoning. If you, if that property is zoned residential, single-family one, your lot size has to be 15,000 square feet. And this is where the West Virginia math comes in, so don't worry about it. There are 43,516 square feet in an acre. Everybody agree with that? I don't know why they came up with that number. I'm sure there's a, uh, it's probably 216 by 216, that's a hectare. If you divide 43, your estimated dwelling units is 2.9 for zoning, even though the land use could be up to five. You hear me?
Oh, I almost spilled my coffee.
You go to RSO two, which has a lot size of 10 thousand, then you're looking at 4.3 dwelling unit per acre. So, in a future land use area, you could have all single-family, but two different lot sizes, and really two different densities that will go down there. I'm going to talk later on about the family development areas and what their densities have actually turned out to be, even though they show a future land use, five units per acre. So, that's the absolute maximum is the way to look at that. Will we ever do that? I doubt it, seriously.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I think another way to look at it, and, you know, big numbers sometimes be scary, but if you look at the difference in, in this comprehensive plan versus the previous comprehensive plan, it's actually a decrease of over 20% in dwelling units.
It is, and, and it is a refinement of what you can do out there. We have tried to be more realistic about what that means. Now, folks who argue involved in the, in the current plan that we're showing the maximum, not necessarily what was envisioned. We understand that. But if you look at, I want to look at, what is my potential carrying capacity? That's what it is. Thank you.
Mr. Daniels, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I just want to say that it's been a great job of the planning commission and our staff on this plan here, and it's probably part of that. And, uh, I, I live in northeast Venice, and, uh, I, I guess I'm, I know where the demographics came from, and you have to do what we're doing here, but I just want to call your attention to this. Back in early 2000, when Venetian and Will Chase came on board, it was basically retirement, you know? Prices were doubled back then to what they are now. Now, I want to speak of Will Chase. He had about 100, around 150 lots, first phase before it went bankrupt, the economy went. He had about 50 homes in which all but two were retirees and solders. Two had kids, which we had a bus stop, two kids. Now, because the price point is about half, and it's now built out with 100 homes, the age, which, this is going to affect our demographics once it gets in the system, our average age is going to drop, not increase. Because now, because the price point, and this is the same at Whitwood and Village of Melant, too, the price points that are on the market right now are about $200,000 less than what it was back before the economy crashed. So, what this is doing is bringing in younger people, they're working and they have kids. I looked at 90 lots that Pat has built, I don't know, but five lots at Whitwood. Every, just about everyone goes home and have kids. So, now, this demographics does not reflect that, and they can't because it's not in the system. So, I, I, I love the fact that we're probably going to have to look at this plan because we're, we're projecting 400 homes going on site every year, is what the planning department has. I would eventually say that our demographics is going drastically changed. We're going to have more kids, and the average age of our population is going to decrease. And that does present itself in different parts. But there's no way you can get that updated right now because it doesn't exist. These homes are just being sold. I just want to say, living out there and watching that, that's what's going on. Venetian would, would say, uh, said the same thing. And they're, they're now already built out, too. So, the demographics of the population and, and the value of the homes are, have truly changed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to make a comment on Mr. Daniels' point. If we go, uh, back to that table that I had there, uh, that one, uh, one of the things that you see is down at the bottom there, is age 15 to 24 is, uh, has had a growth rate of 26% during the period of 2000 to 215. Um, it's not the highest growth rate. Our, our, our other growth rates run from 55 to 74. Do you want to get a phone there if you can turn it off? Thank you. Um, but there is a large percentage of growth that's really in that age group.
Oh, excuse me.
No, no. But it's, but we, we, I want to just point out that that's, that's out there, uh, going forward. Okay. This table that I did for dwelling units has a similar table for non-residential, and I wanted to point out a couple of things in here as well. One of the things you're going to see is the inverse of what you saw in the residential. And that is, under high-density residential, which we talked about residential, you could do, in the old plan, or in the current plan, you could do non-residential, uh, items in there. Add percentages, add conversion rates, and what have you. So, if you're looking at the map, looking at high residential doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's going to be updated. We do away with that, that same, uh, policy decisions out there. We have also adjusted something called the floor area ratio, a fun topic. We've tried to put some diagrams in the plan as to how that looks, um, trying to make them a little more, uh, realistic. If you take your same acre again, and you have a floor area ratio of one, that means that you can cover that whole acre with 43,560 square feet of non-residential. Unrealistic. Because you got to provide parking, and you got to provide setbacks, and you got to provide landscaping, you got to do a lot of things. So, we had a lot of things in the current plan, particularly in the planning areas, that for ages two and four, which meant that you were going to have multiple layers to them. And you can see that it had up to 62,000, uh, excuse me, 62 million square feet of, uh, potential, uh, non-residential out there. We have cut that back considerably in the planning area, or the mixed-use areas going forward, trying to put a more realistic floor area ratio out there. It has caused some other significant policy questions that we will talk about when we get to the mixed-use area. But I just wanted to point out here that we had the same problem in the current plan as to whether it was definitive or not about what you were looking at. Any questions on this one? Um, just so people have a feel for this, currently, the city has, uh, about eight and a half million square feet of non-residential. As you can see, we could go 10 times what we have out there in these plans as the maximum. Even with ours, even with reduced floor area ratios, we have lots and lots of capacity, uh, in the city. And that's what the state wants us to be able to report, is that what we're anticipating, we have the capacity to do. Okay? All right. Um, if there's nothing else on that, I wanted to, the other thing that influenced us was the people who attended all of our initial outreach programs, workshops, and what have you before we put the draft together. And again, I thank everybody who came to a workshop, filled out the, uh, online surveys, uh, provided us input. We had lots of it. It is hard to necessarily combine it all, particularly when you do a math exercise that says, okay, here's the airport. And somebody says, keep the airport, we like it. And somebody else says, turn it into a park. Okay, what do we do? You know, there are certain things that are just contradictory of it. So, what we came away with is a summary of comments. Uh, and I want to stress the word summary. These are presented in the plan in priority order. Jeff, if you can, we're going to do it. Uh, first and foremost, preserve Venice's character, historic places, John Nolan's planning heritage, and cultural resources. They look top on the list everywhere we live. Okay? And I don't think anybody disagrees with that. They might disagree about how we're doing that, but I don't think anybody disagrees with that. Number two, protect the city's environmental and natural resources, and encourage the retention of open space for functional and conservation purposes. Now, words were changed to match the plan. Functional and conservation have definitions as it relates to open space, which I'll get to later on. But protecting open space and the environment was very high up on everyone's list. Balancing future growth in a way that transition and integrates new and existing developments and provides sufficient infrastructure and community services for the increased population. This is a recognition that it's not all this way or this way. It's not all 100% growth, it's not all 100% conservation. It is a balancing act that we have to do in the city going forward. Support mixed-use areas, pedestrian-oriented streets that encourage active lifestyle, and new urbanism principles. Did anyone say new urbanism in their comments to us? A few, not very many. But you need to remember that during the same time that we were going through this process, uh, out here in the big room, there were four different presentations done on new urbanism, looking at John Nolan as sort of the father of new urbanism. It had an influence on the comments that we received. We have tried to build those concepts into the mixed-use areas that you will hear about shortly. Provide a transportation system that enhances mobility and includes a well-connected pedestrian and bicycle network. Yes, the population of Venice is older. That does not mean that they do not get on their bicycles. I want people to understand that. People say, why aren't you writing the plan for retired people? My lord, out in my neighborhood, everybody rides a bike. They go miles and miles out there. They walk everywhere they go or can go out in the neighborhood. We have, uh, about a two-mile loop around the neighborhood, and they walk it every day. People walk in this, in the island, people walk everywhere. So, the idea is they're looking for this multimodal, that's the term of the day, multimodal transportation system to be out there. That includes roads, bicycle lanes, pedestrian sidewalks, as well as, uh, rapid transit, and not rapid transit, uh, transit, uh, capabilities through the bus system. Uh, ensure that there's a variety of housing types that are available to a wide range of incomes. That one's going to get some discussion this afternoon, wide range of incomes. And promote a diversified business environment that encourages entrepreneurs, supports existing businesses and employment centers, and attracts new employees. Excuse me, employers. Um, I don't quite have all this in the memory yet, but, uh, those were kind of the distillation of everywhere of the things that we heard. It, it, they are indicators of what people, they are not absolutes, but they do set forth a pattern of how this plan was put together and some of the priorities that were put forth there. Are there any questions up to this point on the background check?
Continue on.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, we're going to go into the fun part, which is the land use settlement. And, uh, to help me with this, there are a number of maps that we will be referring to. For folks here, if you can't see those maps, they're back on the, uh, out here. Jeff's going to try to bring them up on the screen to the extent that we can. Um, but the first thing that I wanted to go to was, we set up seven neighborhoods within the city. Can you bring up the input, Matt? Get into the paper, you guys. Thank you. There you go. Uh, seven neighborhoods that make up the city. Uh, primarily reason to these, uh, they're somewhat arbitrary, uh, but they point out one thing, that the city is not the same. The island is different from what's going on out in northeast or Knight's Trail. What's going on in Knight's Trail is different from the northeast. What we might want to see happen in the Seaboard Gateway area is different than what's going on in the Pine Brook area. One size does not fit all, is why we went to this. We tried to drive boundaries or to make boundaries. That went to some logical things that we think are going to happen as the city progresses. Obviously, maintaining the island is an important thing to do. Watching the development in the northeast is an important thing to do. So, there are different sets of priorities and different things that come into play. Possibly redeveloping the Seaboard area is a different thing to do. And so, we identified these seven neighborhoods that are out there. Primarily, you recognize that one size does not fit all. The old plan tended to say that we were going to try to replicate the island everywhere in the city. Now, I used a lot of caveats there. Tended to say, try to replicate. Uh, I don't want to be necessarily absolute, because somebody will say, that's not what it says. It is close to that. And realistically, that's not. And realistically, that's not possible. Too much has happened since then. Do you wanna look at that plan? Nineteen twenty-seven on the left, two thousand to the right, and up to today. That's how the city has progressed, left to right. Things happened in the seventies in the Pine Brook area, as that happened, but also some regulatory things happened in the state of Florida. Things like the southwest Florida Water Management District, as swift mud, for those of you interested in acronyms, occurred. Told you what you could do on wetlands, and what you couldn't do on wetlands, and how much water you had to retain so you didn't flood everything else around you. These are the things that impact the city as they go forward. And so we decided that if we broke the city up, highlighted those that had common elements between them, then we could write a better plan. So the plan has some citywide stuff, and it has some neighborhood unique materials that are in there. Okay? So if you go out and look at the plan, you'll see this. We take the citywide stuff, and in each one of the neighborhoods, we'll, we provide specifics about what happened in that neighborhood. We also define the neighborhood a little more distinctly as to how big they are, what's out there today, and what do we see changing. Okay?
Can I?
Yes. Go ahead.
I don't know if this is the exact part area that I wanna ask this question, but it might be, so let me just throw it out there.
Go for it. If it's not, I'll put you off.
Okay.
Jeanette?
So you've looked at the moral area for its future use, and one of those future uses is a potential hospital. Okay? So you've looked at it on what that's going to look like if we get a hospital, and how we move things around, correct?
In high-level terms, yes.
Okay. So...
Don't know if that hospital was gonna get approved.
And, and that's exactly right. But it might, so...
But it might.
So, on the same token, on the other side of the coin, and it's still early in the game, but it is future, have you looked at what potentially could happen if the hospital leaves the island? And what would happen to that particular property? What would happen to the garage, all the ancillary doctors' offices in that area? Is, is that zoning, is it, um...is, is it, is it gentle enough so that we can encourage other type businesses, so that we don't end up with a Seaboard?
There's two questions in there.
I have three, actually.
Maybe three. I'm ready to deal with two. Number one, we have not looked specifically.
At?
At what will happen to the hospital property should the hospital...
Okay.
...move somewhere else. And I caveat everything today, 'cause there are no absolutes going forward. But, uh, but we do have that in a, what we're calling a mixed-use corridor. We'll describe what that mixed-use corridor would allow. So that means that if something leaves, something else wants to come in, here's what's going to be the parameters about what might come in. And that's on every property, not just hospital.
It's, it's not so restrictive as what we have in Seaboard.
And comp plans should not be, uh...
Right.
...that. A comp plan should give you that possibility of what could happen.
Not the zoning.
Let the zoning deal with the specifics on the ground. Again, land use versus zoning. I'll drive that through all there. I would also tell you, Jeanette, that a hospital decision for moving sort of came near the end of our putting this together. So its decision and the Laurel Road decision for Sarasota Memorial are billable in a way that the plan is laid out at a high level. Okay?
And, and I appreciate that. And I thought that that's the answer you were going to give me, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that...because again, we still, we talk about future in these plans a lot.
Exactly. Yeah, and I'll talk more when we get out to...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good going forward?
Think so, yes.
All right. Next thing we did was, we eliminated the current planning areas. There were twelve of them. If you can bring the map up. This map over here in the middle shows the current, future land use map of the current plan. Everything that you see in purple on this map, labeled A through L, I think, throughout the city, were a planning area. Now, the planning areas, um... The planning areas were not bad. We just didn't think they were specific enough about what it is you were trying to do. We kept some of the items that were in the planning area. For example, ten of the twelve planning areas that were established there called for mixed-use development. We kept the mixed-use concept. I want people to walk away saying, "Mixed-use is a brand-new thing." Mixed-use was established in 2010, when the old plan was put together, current plan, I should say, was put together. So we maintained a lot of those concepts. We incorporated some of the other planning concepts. We'll go to where we think they belong better, and that is land development regulations. Things like height control, parking requirements, architectural requirements, things that you would normally see in your land development code about how things will be done, will be there. But we will have, propose to have, in each one of our mixed-use areas, something called form-based code that will take on part of these requirements. But that will be in land development regs, not in the comp plan. We also did not do anything, or reverted a couple of these back to what already exists on the ground. Probably the biggest one of that is East Venice Avenue. See the H up there, which is a purple area? Our map over here, you don't see it with a planning area or a mixed-use area, except with the residential part of that. No, it's okay. Yeah, you can bring it up there. So you can see that Venice Avenue goes back to the sort of underlying zoning that's in there. It's not a mixed-use corridor. It goes back to the underlying zoning. We did that there, we did it out, uh, on the, near the south tip there. So we, as a major policy decision, we did away with the planning areas in view of making it more specific as to what was going to go on, and subsequent, this mixed-use approach, and to move the regulatory material to the land development regulations, not in the comp plan. Questions about that one? Major Jake. Rich?
Jim Barry, thank you. I have a question concerning height. You had mentioned that height is not included in the comp plan. Probably included in the land development regulations, that could be a year later or eighteen months. I'm not exactly sure. But is that a, a common feature of all or most comp plans throughout the state, that the height would be addressed later?
I'm not sure about a common feature. I will tell you this, that we were somewhat inconsistent in the way that we did this in the old plan. For example, many of the planning areas had a height limitation of forty-two feet. Okay? Three stories, forty-two feet. But those areas in the plan that are not covered by the planning area went to the underlying zoning for its height. Okay? So let's take some, and, and recognize that height, for the most part, is done by self catatonic, not by land use. So let's take something easy like commercial development. We were allowed ten feet of parking, thirty-five feet of height, and that's forty-five feet. But it also says that you're allowed fifty additional feet, if you all want to approve it under conditional use. So we have part of the city that was being done under its old zoning regulations, part of the city that had these limitations on height. We believe that the best place for this is in the land development regulations, notwithstanding that. There is an area I'm gonna talk about called transition. We are leaving the height limitation until the land development regs get updated. Another policy decision. So there's a reason why we did it. It belongs, we think, better with the land development regs. But we understand that there's some concern about height going forward. But when we look at height, we need to look at everywhere in the city as to how we do this, not just those twelve planning areas, but everywhere in the city, and what we want to allow or not. You could do it through zoning, which is the current way it's done. You could do it through a height overlay district. And maybe there's certain areas that you want to, within the city, allow. You could also put the worst guidance about, maybe there's certain characteristics that you wanna allow, additional height for. Hotel might be the first one on this. I hate to talk about hotels based on emails that I'm receiving. But notwithstanding that, there may be certain things that you want to do. Now, people point to the ninety-five-foot condominiums near the campus over there as their example of height gone bad. If you're looking from Forty One Wood South, the ridge versus the height, you get a different perspective than when you're on the ground looking up right next door. I understand. But at the same time, I should point out that the, um, High School Auditorium Creative Arts Center is, where's Roger, seventy-five feet? Eighty-five? Eighty-five feet, thank you, Roger. Is eighty-five feet. Little Venice Theater, sixty-five? Right around there. So there are other structures in town where it made sense potentially to do this because of what's going on. What we wanna do in the land development regs, the vision, is to look at all the possibilities. But until that's done, we're going to leave all the planning areas with forty-two feet restriction as a transitional item.
Sorry. The height restrictions would remain the way they are today, it's from the LDR, Land Development Regulation.
Correct.
Both, both. Develop later on.
They're not in two pillars, though. Both for the planning area and both for the traditional zoning area. They will stay the same as the land development. Okay? Thank you. Sure. Anything else at this point? Fred?
You recognize? Point of clarification. Did I understand forty-two feet would be held?
Whatever is in the planning area, there are some...
It says forty-five feet on page eighteen.
There are some that went to forty-five feet, and we may have put that as the overall max.
Also, I know that Italian Renaissance and Mediterranean Revival, both would be included, also along with the height.
Correct. We're keeping the architectural, but we do believe that the architecture needs to be reviewed. And we got a lot of comments during this process that says that maybe we don't want northern attention everywhere. And that's something that we will look at probably on a neighborhood basis, of course. Okay? We also heard from the historic books the other day that the Sarasota School of Architecture is one that they're trying to, um, make sure stays around. And a lot of that is on the island. And a lot of that is in buildings that they think need to be preserved. So just thinking about one or two architectures for the city, that may be where you end up, but it may not be where you end up. And where it belongs, though, is in the land development code, not in, not in the comp plan. Okay? One, one moment? Yes?
I was liaising with the Architectural Review Board during this process, and they are not committed, at this point, for the entire city going north and east to be Northern Italian Renaissance. They, they think we may wanna consider some other architectural thoughts.
I should point out, until such time as this is all done, what's in that current plan, due to the architectural, will stay.
Right.
Okay. Next thing I wanna do is look at the proposed map that we have going forward, and talk about some items that are in there. We've received some comments that we're going to make some changes on. The first one, Jeff, if you wanna point to that thing on the northern gateway there? Yes. There's a, there's a property in there that we've got as, um, commercial, that the owner came and provided this comment that said he might rather have that as residential. And that's what it was before. So we may have inadvertently changed that one. That one's gonna change. The next one I wanna go to is at the Pine Brook Park. You can see that we put the whole park area as park. That would be functional open space. The light blue area across the street, uh, above Pine Brook South, is a conservation area, currently known as Curry Creek Preserve. What the folks in, in that area have asked us is if we can make down to where that boundary is, and Jeff's going across where that boundary is right now, whether we make the northern part of that also a residential. We think that there's a lot of reason to do that. So we are gonna propose a change to the map to make that light blue as it has it. There is a parking lot in the middle there, and we will have to deal regulatory-wise around it, but as far as future land use, that one's there. The other one that jumps out is up in the Laurel Road corridor, and we've received some information that, uh, in that corridor area there, that the top part of that probably should not be in the corridor. In other words, we've gone too wide on the corridor, and that will probably be residential. And I believe that's moderate, although, that would be moderate, so up to nine units greater. And that will be that change. These things will, some of them will affect our numbers a little bit, but I wanted to point out one of the maps, how it goes. Questions about any of those?
Continue on.
So I wanna point out for the Pine Brook folks, that we did listen, and we will be proposing that change. I got a thumbs up in the corner, 'cause that's good. All right. Let me walk through the land use stuff just very quickly. You see that we have residential, non-residential, and open space. At the highest levels, that's the three categories of land. At the residential, we break it down into four layers, low, and moderate, medium, and high, heavy density, while it was associated with it. We have also tried to show the cross-reference between future land use and the zoning regs in the future, that the implementing zoning districts are what is used to implement this type of land use. And those are listed in there. So you see a table, and what we've also put in is pictures. You have a, I don't know if you get that. So that picture there, for example, for low-density residential, on the left, you see the little square, that's an acre. There's four houses in that acre. Okay? One of them, or two of them, looks like that picture that you see from the street view. We've tried to put in some graphics about what these things look like. People have a hard time differentiating between what are we talking about. So we've tried to show, from an aerial view, how many units are in an acre, and in a side view, what they might look like on the street. And we have views for each one of the four residential areas that are in there. Now, one of the things that piqued our attention during this is, we have, you can see, uh, right here on the top, on the moderate, the second bullet bound says, "Serves as a transition between medium and high-density residential or institutional-professional land use designations." It was a high-level attempt to get at compatibility between different land uses. We don't think it's been as clear as possible, given the feedback that we have received. So I believe that our next planning commission meeting staff is going to be presenting us with a compatibility table, which has land use is this way, land use is this way, and what sort of things need to be done when they intersect, including mitigation techniques, buffering, and what have you. Or whether they're not allowed at all. Low residential to industrial, okay, is probably the worst if you look at that table. So that is coming as a change, and these items dealing with transitions will come out. This is based on comments received by providing more information about compatibility. People were concerned that we weren't, that we were taking some of the compatibility language out of the old plan and not carrying it forward. I should also point out that the infamous policy eight point two in the current plan that deals with compatibility will stay during this transition period until such time as the land development regs are redone. Okay? If you go to non-residential... If you go to non-residential, we have four flavors there as well. Commercial, institutional-professional, industrial, and government. The government one is a little tricky. And there is some comments received about government use. It's one thing that if the government is building a library, or a new city council building, or even a police station. It's another thing if the government is building a wastewater plant, or wants to put up cell towers, or whatever. Some uses in government are more intense than other uses in government. We have not seen it, but we will probably make some comments about those in this compatibility method to put in, uh, related to based on comments received. It's tricky. We also have things in here about, uh, floor area ratio, which I talked about before. And then as far as open space is concerned, two, two flavors on that one, functional, which is all your public parks, railroads, those kinds of things, and then conservation, which includes not only conservation areas, but wetlands, wetland hufflers, coastal regions, reserves, native habitats, you get the idea. So at the basic level, we're made up of ten land use categories, more residential, or non-residential, two dealing with open spaces. And as I said before, when you look at commercial, it will be commercial, there will be no residential. If you look at high-density residential, there will be no commercial or institutional-professional. When you see those colors on the map, um, you won't see this. Okay. Now, beyond that, we have introduced this concept of mixed use. These are mixed-use periods, and there are five types in different parts of the city. Now, this one I will get up. Uh, Jeff, if you could draw along the map over there. The first one is mixed-use downtown. Represents the business quarter, core business quarter, and the areas around it. It is a little bigger than what the planning area was, over here. I'd be pretty close, but a little bigger, somewhere. Next is something called, uh, mixed-use corridor, and we have several of them, from the downtown to the bridge, along south, along airport, Laurel Road, and going south through what we've known as the Bridges Project, and up Main Street. That's mixed-use corridor. It has, I'm going to go through the requirements on each one, if I want to point out where they are. Mixed-use Seaboard is this purple, that's in the middle. Mixed-use Airport is this dark area that is around the airport. And mixed-use Residential is these green areas that you see on the map. Lots of them. Okay? So just to orient everybody where these five categories are. In each one of these, we've laid out where they are, what their allowable density is, that's number of units per acre, what their allowable intensity is, in terms of floor area ratio, it's purple here. Um, we've laid out percentages. Before, we only talked about maximum percentage between residential and non-residential. Policy change, we have put in minimum percentages of wealth. Reason being, as a way of guiding what we want to do. For example, in the downtown area, we'd like to see a minimum of twenty percent residential, but no more than fifty percent of the area to be residential. Said another way, for non-residential, we'd like the minimum to be at least fifty percent, but no more than eighty percent. We use these percentages as guidelines, as to what you're trying to achieve in these areas. We've done that in each one of the mixed-use areas descriptions that are out here, as to what we're trying to, to achieve. So if you take one, uh, Seaboard, for example, we'd like to see at least ten percent residential in there. What's in there today? Zero. So what happens when we get a project in there to do, a residential project in there as part of potential redevelopment, and it doesn't come up to the full ten percent? We've got some language in here that allows that to go, even though it doesn't meet the minimum, it's edited in the right direction. Now, what all these do, much to Jeff's dismay, is require some record keeping. But it's also an annual report that can be given to the planning commission and to the city council, of where we stand, and how are we doing? And are we achieving what we want to do? Does our comp plan need to be changed to reflect a different set of goals that we're trying to do? But it gives you the direction of what you're trying to do. There is also some, uh, characteristics in here about what we'd like to see happen. For example, in downtown, typically walkable, developing new form-based codes and standards relating to building placement and design, parking, uh, it also talks about, uh, in any given, uh, project in there, or excuse me, the overall average for, the floor area ratio for the area as a whole, we're looking at point six-five, but in any one project out there, it could be as high as three. Now, that's a little different in that you do not have to provide, in the central business district, your own parking. It assumes that the parking lots and other, street, all street parking, excuse me, one street parking, and others will provide some of that parking for you. But when you take the whole area as a whole, given that it incorporates the Catholic Church as an example, and some of the, uh, other buildings that have residential units in, well, there are parking in those, and there are residential. If there's going to be residential added, for the most part, we're looking at both vertical and horizontal mixed use. Commercial on the first floor, residents on the second or third floor, uh, would be the, would be the vision of what would potentially happen. There is currently a limit in the central business district of three floors as height. We are not changing any of it. So each one has their own characteristics to them, and they really get played out in each one of the neighborhoods with its specifics. We can go back and forth in between there. Uh, let me highlight a couple other things. There is, uh, no single-family, excuse me, no low-density or moderate-density residential in downtown, and no industrial in downtown. We use those kind of characteristics that are in there as well. Uh, industrial in Seaboard, loud, but no new, because we're potentially trying to change the nature of the Seaboard area. So you can see that in each one of these, there's guidance given. Now, in the, uh, fifty percent residential, fifty percent non-residential, except for Laurel Road. And Laurel Road is set up that way, uh, because there's some concern about whether that will take up and be all residential here. I know there's a lot of people in the audience today that are worried about the type of residential, and we'll talk about that. Uh, but, so one of the things we've done on Laurel Road is dropped that residential percentage down to twenty-five percent of the area, and seventy-five percent non-residential, hoping that that Laurel Road corridor will become a business corridor for that part of the city. You need to understand that the interstate goes through there, it's another set of population that needs to be serviced, uh, as well as there's a lot of rooftops that are going on potentially out there, uh, in that area. So each one of these things has, uh, their own layout in terms of intensity, density, uses, uh, percentages for guidance, that kind of thing. Airport, no residential in the airport, not allowed into the airport pantry. All right, any questions up to this point, before I get to mixed-use residential?
Mr. Daniels, Fred, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Uh, going back to the downtown parking, uh, you touched a little spot in my brain during, uh, parking.
I knew I would.
In that, in fact, what you're saying is that we would allow a business to come in, and we would not, and that business parking, uh, you would not warrant, require the business to provide parking, or tell us how much parking they need, because they could use public parking at the churches, et cetera, et cetera, here.
I, I don't know if I'd word it particularly that way, but we just had.
Could you repeat what you said?
I don't know if I can talk about the one we just went through. You led to it, I'll think of it.
If it's pending, then no.
Okay.
It's not sent? Oh, and the appeal period's elapsed?
Well, I, I guess my problem is.
Then, let me give you a real, right, example then. Uh, next door to the bank, uh, they recently came in for a new building to go in there.
Right.
They're just going to take out twenty-some parking spaces.
It's a private lot.
Private lot.
Right.
Uh, not something that had to be provided in there. There was an analysis done, uh, to, there are nine hundred parking spaces within somebody hundred feet of that building. Because you get most of Centennial Park, you get all the, or, on Street, you get the Catholic Church, although that's private, so. There are lots of places around it. When you do something in the downtown business corridor, you are given more leeway about having to provide your parking. If you're out on Laurel Road, in the plaza of Asia, then it's square footage of the building determines how many parking spaces.
And, and, and I understand that, but I, I will say this, I think that's what's got us in trouble. And, right, there are certain businesses that require more parking, and I, I don't think we, I don't think the city right now, I, I know we know how much public parking is available, and we somewhat know how much private parking is available around the downtown district. What we don't know is what the requirements are for each business. That's what disturbed me, and I, I venture to say, if you add it up, for example, Michael Saunders uses a lot of in-and-out parking, and, but I don't like not knowing is this, if, if we have, like you said, nine hundred parking spaces in the Main Street downtown area, and we're already, if we knew this, which we don't know, but the current businesses need eight hundred, then we go ahead and add a business like what you're just talking about.
Right.
And they need a hundred.
Right.
See, that's where we run the problem, because you could force a city into a parking dilemma where we have to build a garage, for eight to ten million dollars, and a quarter million dollars a year operating expense for three hundred spaces, which our, our city manager already looked at this, every city that's done that forces a city into pay parking fees. And I, I, I think we need to know, as these businesses come on board, what have businesses, business requirements they have for parking? We don't know that, 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 we're going to be business of no big time. That's, that's what happened to the FBO study, what they left out.
Let me, let me say that, uh, parking is one of those issues that is also best defined in the land development regulations, not in the comp plan, but there is a way, when that comp plan, or land development reg revision is done, to review the question that you just asked. Because we will know what businesses are out there, and today, parking is saying, telling you how many spaces you need, like type of business, based on square footage and what have you. So there is a way.
At this point, you're going to do that. That's a flaw right now we have, we've not resolved it.
I understand.
And I understand that we need to have a comp plan, but somehow, some point in time, we gotta be looking at that as we add businesses, obviously, on the favor of. If I'm not in favor of you add a business that's going to require three hundred parking spaces, like a real estate company. And if we don't have it, then we're going to get complaints from everybody, all the businesses downtown that live at parking.
Fair enough.
And, uh, the city's done a great job, as you know, adding on parking, and we continue to do that, and will continue on. And, uh, I am a big fan of free parking, as most people know, and I think that's one of the great things about the city. But I'm just calling that out, that as we move forward, that it's something that, uh, I think our planning staff needs to come back and look at, need to know every business, what their requirements are.
Right.
So we know now what, how many parking spaces we have.
Correct. Thank you. Just more, did you have something? Ms. Kate, you're recognized.
Thanks. Barry, you actually hit on something that was sort of a question as I was going through this, I don't know, maybe the second time. Um, you made reference to the master, the airport master plan, and then we have this lovely master parks plan that we worked so hard on. Yeah. Where in, in this comp plan are they? Are they supporting documents? Because they're really, is that what you're calling them, and how do you?
Yeah, they will be, uh, I don't know if they actually will be a foundation, but they'll be adopted by our, right?
Okay.
And you reference.
Just those two, are there more?
There are two others. Water and water protection.
Okay.